I was just gonna say, I go to the [inaudible 00:00:57].
I buy a lot from this [inaudible 00:01:00].
I'll make you a copy, because the agenda from last week will be the three.
I'm pretty sure that I sent it. I just didn't send the whole packet. Sent it to Agenda, sent the minutes.
Did you always print them off for us?
I did, I did print them off and I mailed them, because I failed to give it to you guys at one of the work session or meetings, public meetings. So I mailed them.
So it's gotta be in this stack of stuff somewhere.
Okay, none of you got the mailing?
How did you get it?
You got it?
I got it, it's probably sitting on the desk.
Yeah, I forgot my book.
So do you remember all of this stuff?
Yeah, this is the same one. This is the guy that didn't show up.
They didn't tell me actually to be there. Should've known. I thought I paid, I didn't say my bucks.
So all we'll just have to do is take out the last two.
Yeah, she's gonna bring you the agenda. You guys should have completely read through them, but I can give you this, the one that you will need to sign.
Yeah, and I see your letter, or you think of earlier.
One month.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You mailed it to all the charges, so.
Yeah, I'm glad that helped him.
Good, I just assumed, I'm sorry, I assumed they had the [inaudible 00:01:39].
No, it was just Jerry. And he was off in one of the days. Did I knock that out? We sent them all up with, I think Jerry hooked a little bit, sent them up.
Well, I didn't need to run up, well, I just need to go down the line.
Yeah, I just did the last two. It's just a thank you card for Dr. Parks.
Oh, dude, three hours, I was full out, I had to go.
Guess I should've stood there a minute, huh? Sorry, thanks Bob.
Building price went down, changed a few things. They're supposed to make it sound like you're covering the site, isn't it?
Yeah, so once, until this is ready, then you'll come back to me.
That's our words, that letter, that's yours, I showed the person, maybe it did, I didn't overlook it.
Well, I always mention that when people come in.
Okay, I probably forgot what we talked about, there's so many people we talked to.
Yeah.
This is the set of company [inaudible 00:02:15]. I know we got a [inaudible 00:02:18]. We build structures, this is [inaudible 00:02:23]. Booked it for me after you closed, more, it's way too high. Or it's double. Yeah, that's a good building, probably better, way more expensive.
Why do your computer keep gaming time? It works on [inaudible 00:02:43].
Yeah, I noticed that too, it's like this.
It's fast, it's usually behind, mine's behind by two minutes. It's random.
Phones says six.
Jackson County, Bedford, [inaudible 00:03:00].
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, a roll call.
David Anderson.
Curtis Gordon.
Luke Kennedy.
Jason Murphy.
Bob Phillips.
We do have a court, but top my mouth. It's not on the agenda, I'm gonna throw it in here just somewhere. Jonathan is absent today and is act or vice chair. He asked me to stand in, I didn't know if we needed to have an official approval of me acting chair, or whether it mattered.
Make a motion that Luke is the chair tonight. A second.
Been properly moved and seconded for me to be acting chair. Any other discussion? Same man?
Shouldn't we vote for you chairman?
Just for tonight.
Just for tonight.
Well, what about next time?
Well, yes, we'll, I think we'll have to have that discussion, but that's part of what the vice chair does, is stands in, in the absence of them.
So we'll wait for Jonathan to [inaudible 00:03:56].
Yeah. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favors, yeah?
Aye.
All opposed? It's okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting, did everybody have a chance to go through?
Make the motion that we approved the minutes as presented?
But I didn't notice that I wasn't listed as being absent. That doesn't need to be a change, or no?
Have that.
Yeah.
I thought the [inaudible 00:03:52]. You were gone with the [inaudible 00:03:54].
At this meeting.
That's the one. Where we got these acts.
Everything else?
I thought that meant you were [inaudible 00:03:59]. It was the one before.
Start here, second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as presented, or as amended. All those in favors, yeah? Opposed, same time? Motion passes. Open issues. I don't think we have any, we'll move on to new business, which is a public meeting on an application filed by Matthew Segal, did I say that right? For a special use permit for seasonal dwelling on the listed parcel. Presentation, staff report.
Okay, so Mr. Segal came in August 11th, this year, to get a permit for a shop, and there was a flag on the property for the seasonal dwelling that he did not apply for a special use permit from the previous owners, should've applied for the special use permit from the previous owners. So there were two owners that did not come in to renew that special use permit on the seasonal dwelling, which is in this building right here.
It's half of that.
Yeah.
It's not being used now, but they stay in there, but they use it as like a B and B for hunters. I got like hunts on the doors where everybody that stayed there had dates of what they got every day, so. We were thinking about it, we got a letter to mail, we bought the property.
Yeah, so in order to issue a building permit, we have to get him into compliance for the seasonal dwelling?
And I really see us, I had a kid that wanted to stay there for a few months to work for me, but other than that, it's just pretty much for personal use. It'd be nice to have it in case we did want another family to stay there or something, because, you know, you've got a kitchen and it's got, it does have two bathrooms, two bedrooms. My future realistic goals, have this shop, and if I ever do create the business, you know, there, if I want to down the road, right now it's gonna be mostly for all personal use, because I have fencing business, and then the equipment repair, I work for Air Hard, doing some of their stuff on heavy equipment, people around the area, but I have service trucks, it's mostly in the field. Most of the stuff in the shop that I'm gonna do, that I wanna build, is gonna be like taking care of PMs, I want personal equipment, that I do fencing and stuff for, so. But if that expands one day, and if I have a hired hand, I could be like a breaker or something like that, that I could use, you know, down the road, that's something that's [inaudible 00:04:08].
Is there any questions, [inaudible 00:04:13]?
I have a question, I mean, so we're talking about the big building, so that building right there, so then what type of sewer systems are?
It's got full sewer, it's got a, back here, see that little dot right there?
Yeah.
That's the septic tank.
So it was put in, basically non-compliant.
Yes, we bought it that way, and that's how it was.
So... It has had approval on a special use prior.
Yeah, it looks like it's all done professional, the building, sewer system, I mean, it's all, it's got a heater system in it already, that was very expensive on-demand heater.
The original owners got the permit for the seasonal use, they sold it, the new owner didn't.
Did not.
Then he bought it, and...
There's the lineman, he was there for like a year.
According to...
In between us, and then we bought it, I guess they've been forwarding, it's got slow on work, and then, but the previous one [inaudible 00:05:17].
So it has been up to code, I mean, it's up to standard.
But I was wanting to build, if it's tough, can't speak, but, so I was gonna make this kind of my driveway and kind of a block for my own stuff. I've got a quiver right now, kind of along this fence line, just parked, I can fit a lot of it in this side, I just have no room to work, and I've got a ten-foot door, so I can't get in my trucks in there, service truck and all that stuff, it's all outside. So, what we didn't know, at Air Hard, so we did this dirt work, I didn't do nothing else, just the dirt works, I got skid loads, so, made a pad there. But I wanted to put it almost eight feet away from that one, kind of in that area, but there's a dang fiber military line that went straight through that property, in Dix State, and I've known anything about it. Air Hard had a cult military, like some site or something, they came and marked it, but it's a huge fiber gate, and they came within inches of it. So, so now the pads up here, about seventy feet away from that shop, away from the cable, it's more on this side, for a sixty by fifty building, which is just two doors and that open road. But I got pictures of it, if you guys can see it. But I wanted it closer, but that fiber line there, I can't do anything about it, so, if we would've hit it, I'm sure we would've had black meat and shit out of it. But here's the... And that's how much they quoted me and everything, the only thing I have to add to is gravel.
But you're not applying for that?
No, that shouldn't be for personal use, that's, I just like to get the dwellings, so we go, it's figured out, everything's legit, so. If down the road where it becomes a heavy business, you know, or getting busier, then I'll apply for that, if it's, you know, grows like I want it to someday, but for right now, I'm just gonna be using it for mostly on personal use, so.
So would say, yeah, we're considering the permit for the additional structure today?
No.
I'm just giving you guys kind of an idea of what I wanna do in the future.
Are you gonna have there for the building now?
Just, there's just, the dirt work is done, is all, yeah. But I'll have air.
We're just looking on a special use permit for this season, you all think it's already in [inaudible 00:05:54].
But I do need a building permit for that, so. This company requires it too, you know, I don't wanna, I know some could just put them up and do it later, but I want to go the right way, I'll be honest, get it the right way, so.
So what's your timeframe on that? Get the [inaudible 00:06:03].
I'll probably get the rock done this year, like the layout, and then I've got some extra money coming in January, I think like January, next, first of next year.
So come back in, apply for a building permit at that time?
I don't know when they require it.
You would come in to our office and we would issue a building permit, but I couldn't issue a building permit?
Yeah, gotcha.
Because of this?
Yeah. I'd like to already have it, I get some phones, I got enough to build it, but I don't wanna use all my savings, so, like, first year I got a little, I sold a piece of property in Morse County, so, I'm gonna use that. I got more land, the shop in Morse County, that's where I'm from, Council Road, but that's where the family's at. My fiance lives, works in Pecan, and I was a serviceman, worked contractor for quite a while for John Deere, and that's why I moved up here and bought this property, and after that, I bought my own equipment and stuff over the years, and went out on my own, so, just been doing pretty good, most of the fencing in the area. Do I have to get a permit to do any fencing along my property line? This is all we get on the land, I'm just trying to find, just trying to make the, get the ridgelines with it. We did a lot of tree clearing on that property, and there's a lot of that fence, the shop there, so I might replace that, or whatever it is there.
Any other questions? I guess I'll open the public hearing, is anybody here for opposed?
Good, okay.
Guess we don't have any of that, so...
I think Jason, he might be getting the permit too, but he already has a building there, my neighbor, he's thinking about it, I don't know if he's helping you guys about that, but he has a building up there, like tearing down it's rebuilding, so, I don't know if that would hurt.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion, to approve or reject.
I'll make a motion that we approve Matthew Segal's special use permit for the seasonal dwelling.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion?
Appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Proceed to vote, all in favors, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same time? Motion passes, congratulations.
Thank you. Sorry to see you come back in, maybe next week's fine?
Yeah.
How much is that, for the permit?
I don't know, I don't have the fees quickly, so. How much would, would you say your building was gonna be?
It, well, I told him initially it was like a hundred and thirty, but I got it down to eighty-four, so.
Ninety-four, so it's...
I changed the six-inch concrete to four-inch.
It'll be two hundred dollars.
Okay. Just bring the check, whatever.
You were free, really?
Alright, thanks guys, appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too.
Is there any other business? I do have one quick thing I'll just talk about, I know Chris has got it moving, so, I kinda had this thought prior to, or after Dick resigned, prior to the solar comment forms, or the sessions we had. I spoke with Jonathan because he was acting for chairman, and I'll state right up front, Jonathan is not in agreement with me on this, but he's not here, and I didn't wanna go around him because I knew he wasn't a beater, so we've talked, he doesn't agree, but I wanna put this out there to the rest of you to find out. We are barely out of court, we're down to six members. I would like, currently we are withholding applications for, to fill the open positions on this board, until we finish the regulations. I, because we dropped down to six, and if one of us would've missed tonight, we can't do kind of business. So I would like to, at the very least, go ahead and ask the commissioners, or give approval to the commissioners, to interview for those positions. I understand we do have applicants, and I don't want to hold those applicants up based on our approval, or, you know. One thing that was evident to me after all this is we're not, we're nowhere close to getting done with these regulations, and I don't wanna spend however long it takes and not allow our board to come back up to full strength, so that we can guarantee that we can do business. We do know that we're not gonna meet again until at least November, but when you three new members came on, I fought for you to have your say, and I do believe that the new, anybody that wants to come on is gonna wanna have a say, and I wanna give them that opportunity. Again, Jonathan's not here, he doesn't agree with me on that, but we have two different methods of going about, I mean, if we have a consensus that we wanna go ahead and open those applications up and not talk about the solar maybe until they get a chance to be caught up to speed, or we could just, by simple majority, we could table those regulations until a future meeting and take a break. That's all I'm asking, just take a break, let the commission fill us back up, and then let those people get up to speed, so that we can take this up again. So, any comments?
Well, I don't have a problem with having a lot of people come to the board, that's good, I don't think that it should stop what we're trying to do though.
Right.
I think we should continue to discuss these regulations, you know, and then they come along, because that might, I wouldn't wanna stop that because of this, but I have a problem for [inaudible 00:06:54].
Right, and that was what I, I think the main thing was, is that we, they were told to not add positions until we were done, and I just don't think that's right. So same thing, we don't have to necessarily stop, but allow new members to come in and get caught up to speed, I guess, so.
I mean, I think we need to discuss, like, there was a lot of things that were taken away, right, from those public meetings.
Yeah.
You know, talking about, maybe we need to maybe, as a third party, look at for some, you know, infrastructure, things that needed, should be in place, or something like this, you know, going out beyond us, asking some people to help with those things, I think is important too, so that was, you know, things I would wanna suggest if you before, get some outside good [inaudible 00:07:31].
And I do know that there are things that are in here that probably some of the commissioners want changed, or added to, I think that there's some things that aren't in here that they want in here. So that's why, I don't think we're close, and so I don't wanna hold this up. I don't wanna hold up the actual planning commission business based on not having enough members, so, but yeah, we can still keep moving forward, there's just, we got a lot of work yet to do.
And we're just kinda like, we gotta get up to speed as quickly as you can, it's harder to be able, it takes a little bit of time, but...
And I think that the biggest thing that Jonathan did, and I'm sorry to interrupt you David, but was, that we're not gonna start over, we're not gonna go, you know, if there's things that we need to change, but, you know, that was the fear when you guys came on, was, oh no, now we gotta start from scratch, but I didn't, I didn't agree with that, so, I don't think that we need to start from scratch, but getting other people involved is...
Well, is there, and I don't have an objection to having somebody else and other people come on, but is there a better way for them to get up to speed? I mean, I felt like we, we spent a lot of meetings just getting these three to where we are today.
Right.
So, I mean, and you sit and hash the old stuff over again, maybe that's a good thing? I don't know.
And, well, that's where I almost say if we were, partly because we, October's full, we're into November, and then we're getting into the holidays, we've been meeting every two weeks since the first of the year, and giving someone the opportunity, if they come on, if they're approved at the, you know, at our November meeting, those public comic sessions were videotaped, they are on YouTube, that person can go and watch those videos and get that kind of input. I don't know that it's our job at that point to bring them up to speed, it would be their job to know the regulations, come back to us when we start talking and put their input in.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think the more heads at the table about... I heard a lot of stuff at the last two public comments, and they raised a lot of questions in my head, on both sides, and I think having more heads at the table would be a better idea.
I agree with you, we need to be able to, we need to be able to do our business. And yeah, and we have a long way to go, and just like that, we're trying to do what I can.
So I'm gonna, I guess say that we have a consensus among the five of us that are here, that we would like to ask the commissioners to go ahead with their process. That work?
Does, do we need to make a vote on that?
I guess, to make it official?
Make it official, I'd like to make a motion that we bring our, fill the, yeah, fill the positions.
Also...
It's been moved and seconded that we go ahead and fill the position, the empty positions on the board. Any other discussion? Same man, proceed to vote, all in favors, yeah? Opposed? Motion passes. And I would like to publicly thank Dick for his service and wish him well, Peter, I don't believe well. I think that's all I got.
When are we gonna do the next meeting?
The next regular business meeting is November, uh, we weren't able to come up with the time for any work sessions in October.
October's off the table, we can't do it October?
Yeah, because this meeting, this room is closed for election equipment until November, so our regular meeting in November, it obviously opened back up to us, and then...
I just think that with, with a lot of that, these ideas being fresh, somewhere we can meet and talk about, the sooner the better.
The November meeting is going to be a bigger one, a lot, and the appeals won't do, so.
So we will not be able to have time for any discussion?
I mean, maybe a little discussion, getting your ducks in a room.
Or maybe set in a date?
Sure.
But as we talked the other night, we're getting into Thanksgiving, and...
So the next regular meeting is November? So the next regular meeting is November?
November fourteenth?
Fourteenth. You're gone. So nobody else can be gone? Or we have to, we have to cancel, I mean, unless the commissioners have, haven't had a chance to fill positions. Because if they open the process up...
Would you go if we were here?
Hopefully, that's, if he's not, I mean...
If he's out.
Nobody else can miss if Chris is gone.
Five is a call.
Yeah, cause I originally thought that it was of the members on the board, but no, it's the member, you, the unfilled positions are still considered part of that, so we're a nine-member commission, five is our board.
I think they should bring it back down to seven.
They have that option as well. There was a reason they wanted us at nine, and I don't know what that was, but when you guys, no, when I came on, Bob and I came on, they bumped us to nine. And then, that's, I mean, we've had six people quit this board in the last year.
Well, after six hours of... It's a tough one.
Nothing else?
We have a hearing, or we have hearings beginning November thirtieth?
Yeah, it's a zoning change.
Yeah, is that, uh, thing with the, uh, bringing the board, I don't know, that they, they should just change it back, is that, to help us with the... Maybe I should be, uh, filled in, in that position.
Yeah, that, that would be an option, if they wanted to do that. They set it to nine, our resolution, the mayor's resolution is set at to nine members.
So we need a little process to change it back?
So would you like to hang out with your work session in November? Can, can we just dive into that, maybe be something special?
I know I'm getting, it's getting pretty taxing, kind of, for the people. But, I might as well, might be done as...
Do you do your voting? Do we have that option?
Well, especially at work session, it would be, I mean...
Do you have to have a bond for a work session?
As long as we don't do any, have any votes or, I mean, if we're just discussing things, it's a work session. Nothing official can take...
I guess, do we have to use this room for a work session? Or just go out in the hall?
And then, so you keep, like, somebody said, well, as we freshen the minds, you know, nourishing things up?
And I can also talk about some people that we wanna bring in, and sure, get them lined up to help. I mean, you know, experts, like you're saying.
Agreed.
So here's November.
So why not the twenty, the third Thursday?
Thanksgiving.
That's it.
We had it in October.
This, uh, yeah, this room is not, yeah, so...
Can't we just go in the hallway? I mean, we're just doing a work session.
You wanna up this?
That's alright.
That's alright.
We just have to work up your...
It may be just so we're talking, and just, or we don't even look at the regs, we just get our heads back together and see where we're at, so.
We have a day.
We have two weeks left. Do the last Thursday? Your calendar's blanked out.
I know. Figure out how to, um...
Nine sixteen twenty-three? You wanna do the twenty-third?
Yep.
Twenty-third? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm throwing a number out, why are you laughing?
Because I can't see the days.
I was just doing math.
Sounds good. The twenty-third. Okay, she's got it written down.
Yeah.
And six?
Yeah.
Out in the hall. They might let us use the commission? Yeah, probably.
You're the law, it's not...
They, they would probably let us use the...
Twenty-four.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
We can't do just a quick work session in the night after this meeting?
That's what you have to do.
I'll make it, I make everything work every day.
You have to have something to do, right?
I just gotta go over and help those guys do the review and the decontaminating and the victim. But I can do that, that's, whenever I get there.
Well, we need to get out of the, I will, I guess we're gonna.
We gotta get out of that meeting.
Yeah.
We're done, I can make a motion? I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting for this month? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same time?